Hey, what's good y'all? This is Ryan Jackson for Ryan Jackson LLC. Hope you all have a beautiful, wonderful day. Hope you're being blessed. And I just hope you're just doing well. Hope everything's going good for you. Getting to the topic for this video. So, um, I don't know if many of you have known or aware of this, but down in LA, the LA City Council President and Member, Nury Martinez, this was the LA City Council President, and Ron Herrera, President of LA County Federation of Labor. Well, they both resigned over racist remarks that were made over a year ago. Um, yeah. Two other council members, Gil Sadio and Kevin DeLeon, are also, people are demanding their resignations as well. So what happened, there was a conversation in chambers. A white council member, well, Nury Martinez, who was the City Council President, she made a comment that her fellow council member was a white guy. I don't know his name, but he has a black son. And that he handled his son like an accessory. And she referred to him as a, I don't know if I'm saying this right, Parachi changuito. Parachi changuito. I don't know if I'm saying that right, but what it translates into in English is a little monkey. Like a monkey, excuse me, like a monkey. Changuito is, I guess, means monkey in Spanish. Um, Mr. Ron Herrera and Gil Sadio and Kevin DeLeon, they were all in on this conversation. So, City Council President, she resigned, Nury Martinez. She's out of there. There were calls for her resignation. Um, Ron Herrera, he resigned. So they both got gone. And he was the LA County Federation, President of LA County Federation of Labor. So he resigned and Nury Martinez, who was the Council President, resigned. This goes to what I've been telling y'all, black people. This goes to what I've been saying, what I've been saying, what I've been saying, what I've been saying. And I just said in my last video, we do not have any allies. 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 When will y'all realize this? When is it going to sink into y'all's skulls? We do not have any allies. These people making these racist ass remarks about a little black child. And they were redistricting their, um, certain neighborhoods in LA to make it majority Hispanic. So they would get the majority of LA to be Latino. They were redistricting a lot of neighborhoods in LA so that these areas would be more Latino, heavily populated with Latinos. So that they would keep the power in the City Council. If this isn't... I don't know why people think only white people adhere to white supremacy. I don't know why people think only white people could be racist toward black people. A lot of your Latinos are racist toward black people. Just as bad, if not worse than white people. Especially out here in California. And I've seen it in Florida too. Hell, I even seen it in Central America when I lived in Panama. Brazil is a perfect example of it in South America. I've seen it there. So I've seen racism from the Latino community. I've seen it. In Florida, in Panama, and in Brazil. Out here in California. It's just as bad. California is worse with their racism than any part of the country, as far as I'm concerned. Because people say, well, the South, the South, you know, white people, they tell you to your face, yeah, they're racist. Yeah, they're racist dirtbags down there. Yeah, they're racist, pieces of dog crap. They are. But at least they tell you they're racist pieces of dog crap. These people out here, these mofos out here in California, they are powerful. They are, they are the most, that's why I say California is more blatant and more powerful with its racism. Because you have people who are in, who create laws, who pass legislation that are racist toward black people out here. You have Latinos in power in California who just with a stroke of a pen, they have power. That's what racism is. Racism is power. It's power. Racism isn't about me not, you know, you not liking a white person, not liking a black person because they're black. It's power. I said this last week. Black people cannot be racist because we don't have any power. We have no power. The Hispanic community have power. They have power. The City Council, the LA City Council President, the second largest city in the United States, the second largest city, her policies affect black people. Ron Herrera? These are powerful people, y'all. These are people who had control, could pass legislation. These are white supremacists in brown face. Yes, we have a lot of black, a lot of white supremacists in black face, but we have a lot of white supremacists in brown face. We do. Let's keep it above, we do. You don't have to be white to be a white supremacist. You don't. And where's the Hispanic Caucus on this? I read yesterday that they hadn't came out and said anything about this. I don't know if they have or what, but as of yesterday, they hadn't said anything about this. One thing about it, make no mistake about it, they will stay on code. When their people are wrong, they won't tell them that they're wrong in public. They'll tell them that they're wrong in private, but they still stay on code with them. With black people, we'll tell you you're wrong in private and in public. More so in public and embarrass you just to the, to the, to the, um, to the congrats of white people. We will sell out our own to get a congrats and a data boy. There you go, data boy and an applause from, from, from white, from the white man. We will do it. Matter of fact, that's why we do it. That's why many of us do it. For that very reason. Get a congratulations, a data boy. That's a good nigger. You tore that nigger, that's good. I'm proud of you. Here's your butter biscuits. Here's that promotion, boy. You did good, boy. Now go tell some more niggers, get them in line. It's the old slave mentality. Crack the whip. There are a lot of slave overseers, negro overseers. A lot of them. Crack the whip. Get them niggers in line for massa. Your Roland Martins. Your Joy Reeds. Your Angela Rides. Your Jamil Hills. Mark Lamont Hills. Dr. Michael Eric Dyson. There are a lot of them. What's that clown in Detroit? Um, Michael Emmett. That's another one, Michael Emmett. Your Sage Stills, your Candace Owens. Malika Andrews. Stephen A. Smith, a lot of them. Negro overseers. We gotta get them niggers in line. Jason Whitlock. A lot of them. We gotta get them niggers in line. We gotta get them in line, boy. You better get them in line. Get them niggers in line. Can't we agree to disagree in private? Must it be in public? Must you embarrass another black person in front of white people just to get a congratulations from them? A pat on the back? A pat on the head like you pat a dog? A basket of butter biscuits? Really? That's what some of our people do. But I digress, but like I was saying, as of yesterday, I don't think the Hispanic community, or Hispanic community, the Hispanic Caucus, excuse me. Hispanic Congressional Caucus have came out and said anything about this. As of yesterday, they hadn't, from what I know. And they stay on code. And make no mistake about it, that speaks volumes of how they feel about black people. For them to not come out and not say anything about this, this is yesterday, I don't know about today. I could be wrong. But for them not to say anything about this, let you know of how they feel about black people. And let you know what they think of us. But yet, we still want to say we have allies. We have allies. We have allies. Everybody's our allies. Y'all better stop using that word loosely. Black people aren't even allies with each other. How the hell do you think we're gonna be allies with other people? We need to be allies with ourselves first, amongst ourselves. We can't even stick together amongst ourselves, be allies amongst our own people. How the hell you gonna try to be allies with another community? Or expecting them to be your ally? We have no allies. And this is case in point. There are a lot of black people in LA. And this woman here was writing legislation, passing legislation in the city of Los Angeles. And you can call a little black boy an accessory? Or like he, he like a monkey? Really? We have no allies, y'all. What about this so-called black and brown coalition? Where is that at? It doesn't exist. It exists in y'all fairy tales. Like Santa Claus. The Easter Bunny, that stuff. It's a figment of y'all imagination. Y'all made this shit up. It doesn't exist. It doesn't exist. It doesn't exist. Hit that thumbs up button. Hit that thumbs up button. Smash it down. Hit the subscribe button so you can notifications I want to do videos on here. It doesn't exist, y'all. Stop it. Come to reality. Reality check, homie. It don't exist. We have no allies. We have no allies. I keep telling y'all that. Just because you have a friend that may be Hispanic or Asian who is for reparations, that doesn't mean that the whole collective group of them are for our causes. Just because you have a friend from another community doesn't mean the whole group. Where are the people, the powerful people in the Asian community? The powerful people in the Hispanic community? The powerful people in the LGBTQ community? The powerful people in the Jewish community? Where are they at as far as us with reparations? The people who can make stuff happen? The people with power? Now again, you can say you have allies. Then you can say we have allies. That's just like with America when in World War II. If there were only a few British people, a few Russians who wanted to help the Americans fight, that's not saying we have allies. Because those are only a few people. But when the British government and the Soviet government helped us to defeat Hitler, yeah, then we had allies. You see how that works? You understand how that works now? Because their governments were powerful. Their British government was powerful. The Soviet government was powerful. Soviet Union. So yeah, they were allies. But if it's just a few Soviets, a few British, that don't mean nothing. That's not our, they're not, that's not our allies. Yes, they do all hate us. I keep telling people that. They all hate us. I keep telling people that. But it won't sink in. It doesn't, what Martin Lawrence used to say, it's not registering. It's not, it's not registering. It's not, it's not registering. I keep saying it over and over again. We have no allies. But they want you to vote. And a lot of these people who said this, they were Democrats, by the way. Just want to put that out there. They were part of the Democratic with three K's party. Democratic Party. Spelled with three K's. Not the Republicans or Republic clans's, spelled with three K's as well. Not them, but your good old Democratic Party. Our so-called friends, allies. That's where these people were from. LA is totally democratic. Like New York, like Chicago, like Detroit, like Philly, like Atlanta, like Seattle. Like San Francisco and Oakland, like Portland. It is. The second largest city. City Council President of the second largest city Hispanic woman making racist comments. Go figure that. Hmm, am I surprised? Hell, effing, no, I'm not surprised. I'm just surprised they didn't come out last year. Why they waited till a year? Somebody, she must have pissed somebody off. And they held on to it. And they used it. And they played that card. Bam! Game over. They held on to that sucker. Bam! They took out two. Nury Martinez. And, um, what's his guy's name? Ron Herrera. And it's cause for two others to resign. Gil Sadio and Kevin DeLeon. We want y'all out of there. You got leaked videos, man. Like I said, like I said in my, in my first video about the Draymond Green Jordan Poole, you don't know who's watching or listening. You don't know these days. In this day and age, as far as how technology has advanced so much, you don't know, you don't know, you don't know. It will come back and bite you. So be careful. Be careful. You will get burned. And Nury Martinez and Ron Herrera got flame broiled. And it's cause for the two others, you know, for them to resign. So we're gonna see how that's gonna go down. But I'm not the least bit surprised. A lot of Hispanics, Latinos, whatever, whatsoever have you, they hate black people. A lot of them do. They, they, they have a hate for black people. More so than white people. They just another branch of white supremacy, but in brown face. They don't like us. They don't. And it's, it's time for us to unite and be allies with each other first. You have a right to have whatever friends you want to have. I can't tell people that. I can't tell people who to be friends with. I can't tell people who to marry or whatever, who to hang out with. I don't have that right. Because I don't like it when people tell me that. So why the hell would I tell anyone else that? I wouldn't. But all I'm saying, let's unite and become allies within our people first. Let's do that first. Become allies, become friendly, unite with black people first. Our people first. Let's be B1. Not B3, B4, B5, B10, B2, B1. Black first. Unite. Be allies with other black people. We don't have to agree on every damn thing. Other communities, they don't all agree on every damn thing, but they stay on code. Let's stay on code and unite with our people first. Then, then and only then, let's branch out with other communities. But let's start with us first. Us first. Let's be allies with ourselves. Stay among ourselves. Support our own. Do for self. Be one, above all. Be one above everything. Black first. Black first. Black first. Yeah, I'm militant. I'm black first. Be one. I don't care what y'all doing over there. I don't care what y'all doing over here. We gonna take care of what we doing here, right here. We right here. We concerned with right here. We don't care about over there or over here. We concerned about what's going on right here. And right here only. Take care of this first. Stop playing, stop playing these away games, black people. Because it's doing us no good. It's doing, it ain't doing us any good to play these away games. Stop it. But like I said, I'm not the least bit surprised. LA is, is, is more racist than Birmingham, Alabama, Jackson, Mississippi, Tallahassee, Florida, America's Georgia, anywhere in the South. Anywhere down there, Orangeburg, South Carolina, Wilmington, North Carolina, anywhere. LA's racism is horrible. And it's one of the most racist places in this country. Far supersedes any place down south. Because you got people with power. White people with power. Black, uh, yeah, you got white supremacists in black face. What's the lady that's running for Bass? The sister down there? Maxine Waters. Y'all Auntie Maxine, that's what y'all called her. She ain't none of my auntie. She don't have our best interest at heart. Karen Bass, I think that's her name. Karen Bass. Forgot what she running for down there in LA. She don't have our best interest at heart. They about everybody else but us. They more upset about this than, than, uh, about these people, you know, not resigning than about anything else. They don't care about our issues. Where are they on reparations? What is saying fire and vigor for reparations? Like you have for this incident. Yes, it's bad. Yeah, they need to be dealt with. But what about reparations? A black economic plan? Bringing a black family together? Our neighborhoods are in a shambles. What about that? Had a saying, fire and vigor for that, like you do for this. More so that than this. But they don't. They want to go along and get along. And it's infuriating. And I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired about this. It does the black community. It doesn't do us any good. It just doesn't. I can't be more, make that more clear than that. It just doesn't. It doesn't, y'all. So, so it'll be interesting to see what goes on in LA, but I'm not surprised. But this is the party. These people from the party that want you to go out and vote for them in, what? Two and a half, three weeks? Three weeks now? They want you to take your booties to the polls. Vote blue no matter who or what. No vote, no buck. V as in victor. U as in, uh, uniform. C as in Charlie, K as in kilo. No voting, no buck. That madness, that dumbness, stupidity to the highest level. These are the Democrats. It's like every day, something is coming out about them. But yet, our people will break their collective necks and backs to vote for them. And not asking for, what am I voting for? Am I getting anything for my votes? I'm not telling anyone not to vote. I don't have that right. I wouldn't dare do that. You should vote. All I'm saying is, know what you voting for. Politics is all about quid pro quo. Something for something. You want me to vote for you? Okay, that's fine. What are you gonna give me in return? What about reparations? A black economic plan? What are your plans? An anti-black hate crime bill? Make us, pass something, legislation to make us protected. Like you did with the Asian community, the LGBTQ community. Do that for us. Fight for reparations. We want reparations. We want a black economic plan. We want, we want you to fund black businesses. Teach black people to start businesses. Build up our neighborhoods. Kind of like how y'all did, you know, Europe, Western Europe after World War II. And Japan after World War II as well. Do that for the black community. Then, and then I will vote for you. Until then, nah. It's just, God bless you. I wish you the best, but you're not getting my vote. Stop, black people, start asking for something. Start, start asking. Start asking for what am I voting for? And am I getting something in return? Start asking those questions. Don't just blindly throw your votes out there. Oh, it's a black person is a Democrat. I'm gonna vote for him. Did you know that this person think that boys and girls at the age of five have a right to change their gender? No, I didn't know that. But you voted for him. Did you know that they're for abortion? No, I didn't know that. But you voted for him. Did you know that they're against reparations? I, I didn't know that. But you voted for him. Come on, y'all, do better. Do better, y'all. Last thing. I saw a crazy video. Martin Lawrence are telling our young people at Howard University that they need, and with Michelle Obama, that they need to go out and vote. They need to go out and vote. Vote for what? Where are they getting for their votes? Have you asked that question, Martin? Marty Mar? What's up? Have you asked that question? What about Shanani? Has she asked that question? We are only community that get our celebrities to tell our people to vote for the Democrats. It is so embarrassing and disheartening and just sickening. We keep doing that. Malcolm spoke about this back in the 60s. Instead of getting people who are our scholars, that are intelligent among us, you get athletes, comedians, musicians, entertainers. It's like, why? They're the best out of black? So that's all, they're the best among black people? They're the best. You have a black man that's a finance professor, Dr. Boyce Watkins. You have Dr. Claude Anderson. A great mind that's still among us. You have the brothers and sisters in the Nation of Islam. Who as far as I'm concerned are black superheroes. You have the Honorable Minister Louis Farrakhan who is still among us. All these minds. Dr. Christina Parks, brilliant sister. She's in Molecular Biology at the University of Michigan. All these brilliant minds. And you have comedians, athletes, entertainers to tell us to go vote? To tell us, go vote y'all for Democrats. But when you have people like the Honorable Minister Louis Farrakhan who tell us to do for self. To do for self. The brothers and sisters in the Nation of Islam that preaches, that preach that same message. Tell us to do for self. Tell us to do for self. Take care of ourselves, take care of families. Dr. Claude Anderson. Do for self. Quit, pro quo when it come to vote. Ask, what are you voting for? Dr. Boyce Watkins. All these brilliant people. Brother Maj Torre. Reminding us that the, of our Second Amendment rights. And our rights, period. You have these brilliant people, but yet y'all bring up people like Martin Lawrence, Steve Harvey. It, it, it is, is, it's mind blowing, it is so mind blowing. We gotta do better, black people, we gotta do better. Hit that thumbs up button, hit that thumbs up button. Smash it down. Hit that notification, hit the uh subscribe button so you get notifications, I wanna do videos on here. On that note, I'm gonna hop off of here, y'all. Um, but just, we just gotta do better, black people. We gotta do better. But y'all take care of yourselves, brothers as well as sisters. Be safe out here, be safe. Going to work, going to the bank, going to the store, whatever you, you may be doing. When you're going out, out here uh in these streets. Please, please, please be careful. Keep your head on a swivel and just be aware of your surroundings, please, y'all, please. Be safe. Take care of yourself. Take care of one another. And God bless you, I love y'all. Thank you for the love and support and uh, and uh, please continue it because I need it, please continue it. Um, and God bless y'all. God bless. And like I always say, we don't have to agree. Unless, agree to disagree without being disagreeable. Please, let's do that, y'all, let's do that. I love y'all, God bless. Take care of yourselves and one another. Alright, I'm out. Peace and blessings.